We'll call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors Ventura County for June 18th. Would you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Here.
And Supervisor Foy?
Here. And right now, we'll do our moment of inspiration. I'd like to call out Patty Schultz, Executive, Chief Executive of the ARC of Ventura County. Thanks Patty for coming.
Morning. I'm Patty Schultz and this is Peter Poncy. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today and to share the exciting new logo of the ARC of Ventura County. For over sixty years, the ARC has been creating opportunities for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. What began as small groups of parents who wanted more for their children continues today as a grassroots organization with over seven hundred and thirty chapters nationwide. Our new logo was designed to embody our shared mission and values and to harness the power in numbers and voices. The logo combines the logotype, the ARC, with an icon we call the catalyst. The shape of the catalyst reflects our embracing nature and the burst of energy at the top right is symbolic of how we support independence. Our tagline is "Achieve With Us." Our new logo communicates our commitment to promoting and protecting the human rights of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and actively supporting their full inclusion and participation in the community throughout their lifetimes. Our collective voice provides each of us an opportunity to make a difference. The ARC is driven by opportunity, the opportunity for hope, for growth, for change, the opportunity for everyone to be a valued contributing member of their community. We are the ARC of Ventura County and we invite the communities of Ventura County to achieve with us. Peter, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Will you please stand? Please place your right hand on your heart. I place my右手 to the flag of the United States, oh no, no, the Republic, where it stands, we want a nation under God.
Peter, thank you very much. Patty, thank you so much for coming out today.
Thank you. We also have a gift for the supervisors.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Jeff, can you grab that from her? Thank you. Wonderful. Appreciate all what you're doing. Okay. All right, let's move to our minutes of June 11th. Couldn't be the week before, but it has to be this one. Wow. Thank you. That's where you go. Sure. All right. So, let's see how our agenda is for today. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Chair Foy. We do have a few items. As you've seen, the minutes have been distributed and posted. Item 10, the renewal of contracts for general job order contracts. We request removing that to the regular agenda due to corrections on the board letter. That's number 10. On Agenda Page 6, item 18, there's a revised agenda titled only "To Reflect Contract Term of October 1, 2012 through September 30, 2013." On Page 7 of the agenda, item 19, there's a revised agenda titled only "To Reflect Claim Amount of $100,000," not $10,000. Agenda Page 7, number 20, there's a revised agenda titled only "To Reflect and Not to Exceed Amount of $5,000," not $5. We're watching our budget, but not quite that closely. Item 29, 10:30 a.m., time certain, first five Ventura 2013-14 operating budget presentation, a PowerPoint presentation has been distributed and posted. And finally, there's an addendum, Agenda Item 42, approval of the Board, for the Board of Supervisors to invoke Section 1104 of the SEIU MOA authorizing payment of overtime for healthcare agency IT staff impacted by recent electronic health-related projects. And the board letter has been distributed and posted. And that's it. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as revised? All right, we can vote. There we go. All right. Then we have our consent items, which would be 11 then through 26.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item 11 and 12 and have Lynn give us an update on those two items.
11 and 12?
11 and 12.
All right, why don't we do that first?
Okay, Lynn, can you give us an update on Prime Development Peninsula Peninsula Peninsula?
Yes, good morning, members of the Board. Mr. Powers, Lynn Krieger from the Harvard Department. These two items reflect about the last nine months of work, I guess, negotiating a new agreement with the new owners of the apartments, Prime Real Estate. And one, one of the partners lives in Los Angeles, but has had a house for fourteen years on Oxnard Shores, so he's very familiar with the area, and the other's in San Francisco. They are offering to completely update the apartment's exterior landscaping and all that, spending $10 million in exchange for nineteen years of term on the apartments. So, we're very happy that the apartments are dated and this will be a great reinvestment.
I met with the Prime individuals, you know, they're stakeholders, they live here and the, the work they're going to do is just phenomenal. They, they had some renderings on what they're going to do and it's just completely going to update all those apartments here on Peninsula.
That should be wonderful for the harbor.
And Prime is represented here today, I don't know.
You want to share, you want to share anything with us?
Yeah, sure. But we'll share with you first.
Yes, please.
Yes, uh-huh. I didn't meet with the, those individuals and the...
That's right. Right. Thank you for the opportunity, Board. My name is Chris Crogan. I'm the Senior Vice President for, for the Prime Group. And this is Bert Ortiz, and he's the Regional Manager that will be overseeing the asset itself. But we're, we're very pleased with the progress that we've been able to make. You know, this is an unusual opportunity. It's quite a stretch of, of real estate there and we have an opportunity to make that quite a bit more than it is today. And Lynn was absolutely right. You know, we work pretty diligently with our architects that are also pretty familiar with the area and they too live pretty close by and were familiar with it. And I think we kind of up with something that is going to make the harbor look a lot better and put a better face on it than exists today.
And one of the things that you mentioned was before that they're not going to be for sale, you're going to renovate them and keep them and, and work with them, you know, and so forth.
Correct. Yeah, these, these are going to be for rent.
For rent, so I think it's a major plus, you know, for the harbor and...
That's great. We, up here, this Board wants to be good partners with the people that come out and put their money up, so whatever we need, I know Lynn's a great representative for us and so we're, we're here to, to help whatever you need to do. So, that's wonderful. Glad you're willing to be part of it and partner with Ventura County, so.
Well, thank you. We enjoyed it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Pardon? Okay.
Those 11 and 12.
Is, okay, so you want to do a separate motion for 11 and 12 separately?
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's for 11.
And then we'll do 12.
12.
Yep. Okay. And then we, excuse me, then we can go back to 13 through...
Could I ask, regarding item 19, this is our, I believe, $100,000 for sidewalks in El Rio. Are those new sidewalks or replacement?
Watch what you say.
They're new sidewalks.
I think it's great that we're using some of these funds available for sidewalks because there are a lot of areas in the county that are, are needing. And we have an emphasis now of trying to work on what they call active transportation, getting more bicycle lanes and sidewalks. So, I appreciate the effort and the, once you put a sidewalk in, it's probably good for, what, twenty, thirty, forty years? Is that what you expect? And then, at least for my office, it would be nice to get an idea about what kind of facilities we have out there. We have a pretty good understanding of how, you know, road miles we have, but don't really have sidewalk miles or bike lane miles. I think that would be good information for us to have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you provide that?
Those are bicycle, bicycle funds too, right? Bicycle lane funds?
This is Transportation Development Act funding that we could use for either bike or sidewalk, yes.
That's right. Thank you.
Great. All right. Now we have, pardon? Yeah, most of our consent, 13 through 26. All right. We'll go to public comments. Do we have any public comment cards?
Five.
Five. All right. And, Mr. Supozan, what is it? Espinoza Jr.?
Miguel.
Miguel? Where is he?
Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. I come here as a proud Korean War veteran whose grandfather was born in this city under the flag of Mexico. I don't believe any of you can match that claim, not even the supervisor of the 5th District. As a child, I was warned many times to go back to Mexico by individuals very much like yourselves. I expected John Zaragosa would do his part to correct that image, but during the slaughter of Oxnard Hispanic males by their police officers, John, who was born and reared in La Colonia, was not to be seen or heard from. The people of his neighborhood were forgotten, ugly memories to be recalled only during campaigns. A friend suggested I look under Steve Burnett's skirts, but I don't know what he'd be doing there. John has flexed his muscle to keep McGrath State Beach Park alive, but not to gain satisfaction for the deaths of young Hispanic males. Timothy Chacon was an unarmed meth addict, the son of good friends, shot and killed by Officer Zachary Stiles, who later, incidentally, was involved in the killing of Alfonso Limón, shot down as he was returning home from jogging exercise. I haven't been able to get an answer from Oxnard Chief Jerry Williams as to whether Stiles was tested for contributing emotional, psychological, or mental defects. We don't know if he was stable or not. At the time, he killed two Hispanic men, and we don't know if he had premeditated the killings. We don't know if Stiles contained inner tendencies toward the killing of Hispanics. He is being dispatched onto streets now and neighborhoods where he may present a danger to residents, causing extreme negligence on the part of Chief Williams. I don't expect you, the Board of Supervisors, or John, the Supervisor of the 5th District, to move toward resolution of this complaint. It isn't the sort of cause that gains political endorsements. I wanted to make it clear that we have a crime enforcement system participated in by our district attorney that is influenced by race. That is not what I volunteered my service for. Those of you who lie back and allow these policies to prevail are traitors to the cause of liberty, justice, freedom, and equality. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to share that my family is very proud. My dad served in the Second World War. My family served throughout. My son and my nephews in the Iraq War. My grandpa came over here in the late eighteen-plus and became a proud American and helped build this nation. I just wanted to share that at this time. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank all those, all those people that have fought to defend freedom of speech, because that's certainly what gets to be exercised here in the Board of Supervisors room during public comment.
And I appreciate his comments too, but I just wanted to share that we have done our
Yes, I agree with you, Supervisor. It's not politicians that go out there and fight to defend that, it's the people who do. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Board members, I'm here to talk today about, I came from Fillmore, all the way from Fillmore, long ways away. Takes at least twenty minutes to get here. I came here today to talk to you about your environmental health department. I'm the community organizer for the California Honey Harvest Festival that just happened and barbecue championship that just happened in Fillmore last, this last weekend. I don't think it happens very often, and so I wanted to come over here today to tell you something that I had, an experience that I had with your health department. It was a great experience. I had, I wish I could remember the, the two ladies' names that did the inspection of the booths on Friday. I, I tried to find it out this morning, I couldn't find it out. Holly Sinclair and Susan Seller were the other two people I interacted with the most. And I wanted to come over and, and tell you that I wanted to publicly commend them, because I hear so many things every once in a while, that bad things about the health department, that people have problems with them, and I couldn't have found them more helpful. Holly was somebody that just, I didn't know what to do. I had no idea how to deal with this. I've never done a temporary food facilities before, and Holly stepped up and explained it to me, and I went to the class she taught. I was very impressed with them, both of them. They are great public servants. They do their job, you know, they're going to follow the rules, they want me to follow the rules, they want the food people to follow the rules. That's all good. But when we didn't understand something, they took the time to explain it. They were patient with the ignorance that was before them. And I thought it was something that I would want to express to you. I think that they deserve recognition for all that they did. They, they really stepped out beyond what they probably required to do. Susan, when she came over, we had eight booths to inspect the day of the event, right in the middle of the contest that we were doing. There was a barbecue contest, a California sanctioned event with California Barbecue Association, and also sanctioned by the Kansas City Barbecue Society. It's a lot of rules that these guys have to follow in order to compete. She came over about fifteen minutes before the first turn-in, of, of the first meat to turn in. And I said, Holly, this is a bad time. Or, I'm sorry, Susan, this is a bad time. They're fifteen minutes away. These guys are focused. They don't want to, they don't want to talk to anybody. They don't want to talk to me or anybody else, they're focused on getting their first meats done. And she said, okay, we'll wait. That's all right, we'll wait. She spent time with every one of the booths. She waited until everybody was done turning in that first one. And as we went along, there's four turn-ins. We'd come up against another turn-in time and she'd go find somebody that already turned in, or we'd go to that booth, and so we weren't interrupting. I just want to say that they were very cooperative. There were little problems here and there, and, and she said, well, this is why it's a problem, and let's fix it. And we fixed it. I, I hope I'm getting across to you that I was really impressed with these people. And all the rumors you hear, the innuendo that you hear about the county health department, I suspect it may be on the other side of the issue rather than with these people. I, I found these people incredibly, incredibly helpful. So, again, the two names, I wish I could tell you the other two. I'm going to try to find out, I'm going to send you all an email with their names, because I really think they need to be commended. And Holly Sinclair and Susan Seller were outstanding. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. We, we do, you're right. You'd hear nothing but a lot of complaints, and the good things kind of go, because there's some really good people out there trying to do great work. And I know Mr. Powers has worked from his office down and the leadership of that to, they have regulations they need to enforce, and we all want those enforced, because we want to be able to go out and eat that meat and be, not get sick. But they also got to be solution and solve, problem solvers, and that's what it sounds like. They were in helpers, and, and that's just tremendous to say thank you very much. And I know Supervisor Parks, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming all the way from Fillmore. But appreciate it. And I know the honey festival, this is the second year of it, and a great success from everything I've heard and read, so thank you. I know you're a good supporter of them. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Again, I just, it was a great experience.
Mr. Campbell, I just wanted to thank you for coming here. I think you're right, a lot of these great experiences happen every day with our departments, and we don't hear back. And that's okay. It's not required. But it's really nice to be able to highlight something like this, and the fact that you took the time to drive all the way here and say this. It means a lot. It does mean a lot, and it'll help us and recognize these people and others who are doing this same great work. Thank you.
Perfect. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Carol Dean, I know you've got some wonderful, nice things to say too.
Good morning, Board. Mr. Powers, I have a video here. This is Wells Fargo Bank. I'm waiting in line to pass a check at Wells Fargo Bank.
Sir, can I talk to you a second over there?
No, I'm waiting in line to do business.
Well, I just want to...
And there was the Von's manager. Don't take a picture of them.
Well, what's the device?
What?
What's with the camera phone?
There's security. To document, the reason you're trying to talk to me.
This is private property, and if you, no photography in the store, okay? And I'm not authorizing you to take pictures of myself either, okay?
I don't, I don't need you to authorize.
Yes, if on my private property, you do.
Do you have written consent and permission from the landowner and the property manager?
Pardon, is this, is this a business?
This is a business, but it...
No, I'm not taking pictures of them. Okay, I think you're playing it right. Okay, in Dispatch Report 19607, for one hour and ten minutes, I am accused of committing multiple crimes. There was the facts. And I hope the sheriff will enforce the laws of this state as the chief law enforcement officer. For an hour and ten minutes, in 19607 dispatch report, I am accused of multiple crimes, and they admitted to a hate crime. They admitted to a hate crime. There's the Von's manager assaulting me. There he's assaulting me. The Von's manager is assaulting me. The hate crime means a criminal act committed in whole or in part because of one or more of the following actual or perceived characteristics of the victim. In the report, they admit to a hate crime. Okay? Now, Janice L. Marusi has already lied to me on the phone. Robert Reiner, the chief investigator, has openly expressed his hate for me on the telephone. So, I am here at the Board telling you that the district attorney does not work for the community. I would like for you to take the district attorney out of this brochure. He does not work for the community. Maybe the sheriff will. Maybe the sheriff will work for the community. This happened in Ventura County. The sheriff is the chief law enforcement agency. I hope he'll talk to me. He won't respond to my emails. Ms. Parks, did he answer you? In the email, I CC'd you. Did he answer you? That's pretty rude not to answer a supervisor. So, here I am. I'm bringing these concerns to the Board. You're the county of Ventura. The district attorney is no different than Michael D. Bradbury, which this Board, in my presence, said you're not going to allow the next district attorney to pull what Michael D. Bradbury pulled for his 24 years of service to this county. But is, is the DA mad at you again? Or should I say, is the DA hating you again? He sued you, he sued you and lost. So, am I caught up in the middle of this hate between the Board and the DA? They lied to me on the phone. They won't uphold the state criminal statutes. The district attorney of Alameda County says they don't know the law. The prosecutors of Riverside County say they don't know the law.
Carol Dean, that's, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Elizabeth Johnson? Ms. Johnson? Yeah. Excuse me.
Good morning. Well, I'm going to lighten up the tone a little bit and invite you all to a party. If I may give you a flyer? Yes, I'm here on behalf of Valley Veterinary Nonprofit. I think all of you know who they are. They are a nonprofit spay-neuter clinic in Simi Valley that performs over 8,000 spay-neuter surgeries a year. Last year, they did 8,400 surgeries at no cost or low cost. They are performing a tremendous service to this county to clean up the pet overpopulation problem. I'm organizing their fundraiser in September, and I'd like to invite you all to please join us, show your support, and help us continue the good work.
Well, thank you for coming all the way out to tell us about this. That's wonderful.
Yes, if this clinic weren't able to continue, if you do the math, 8,400 a year exponentially, that's a tremendous number of animals that would be homeless, have to be rounded up and euthanized. And we want to make this county no-kill in a few years. So, please come join us and have a good time in September with us.
Well, thank you for coming out. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And Dr. Novy's just performed some great services, and the Valley Vet Nonprofit is going to be able to assist us greatly, because we, we won't have to put animals, you know, to death at our shelter if we don't end up having them to begin with. And then that's the problem, you know, all animals should be wanted.
Exactly. They tend to fall out of the sky right in front of me, and I can only take in so many, but I trap feral cats. And I just want to say, they have been tremendous for those of us who are trying to get the feral cats off of the streets, because when I lived in Houston, there was no such organization. It cost me $200 a cat to have fixed and vaccinated when I lived in Houston. They'll do it for a donation. If I don't donate, they'll still do it. And for the people who just cannot afford to go to a regular vet with their pets, and there are so many of those people out there now, especially in this economy, they'll do those surgeries. If they can only pay $10, they'll do it. It costs them $40 per cat and more per dog, so we have to make up that difference with fundraising, with donations. And they're totally, they're not supported by public funds at all, and it, it's very important that we get the word out and get these donations in and get the fundraisers going. So, please come join us. Tell your constituents about us. It affects every district of this county, and we'd love to see you there in September. It's a, it's a totally new venue, dining on the patio at Lost Canyons. You can buy tickets online this year. You can see our auction items online, so please come out and join us.
How long have you been trapping feral cats there?
Twenty years. I've been trapping ferrets.
You've been working with, with this organization as you've been doing that?
Oh, no, I, I became a client of Dr. Novy's personally in 2005, and then I was, I became aware that the nonprofit was there and started taking ferrets there. I had moved to Ventura in 1997 to work in, as a forensic scientist, started cleaning up the parking lot over at Telegraph, or Telephone Road, Telephone and Market, where there's a huge colony of feral cats. So, I've been helping get the feral cat population down since 1997. There doesn't seem to be an end to it, but for everyone that's neutered... There doesn't seem to be an end to it, but for everyone that's neutered or spayed, they're hundreds less, you know? One other thing that they do with the ferals, they vaccinate them for rabies and respiratory diseases. That keeps the colonies healthy. So, again, it's a huge, huge public service you're seeing from these folks, and it's all private money, you know, donations and grant money.
You're joining a remarkable group of people.
Oh, I know.
As you're starting to step in for Ms. Peters, who has just left as the chair of this fundraising event, but...
That's right.
You're one of the most satisfying organizations I can think of to support.
Well, Dr. Novy threatens to retire from private practice in four years, and I will be chained to his ankles, trust me, because I just cannot function without him. You know, when you try to save the world one animal at a time, you need a vet like that, and you need a clinic like that, and they've been there for me and so many other people.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
And people who want to contribute can go to valleyvetnonprofit.com.
Lucas there?
So, the other day, I was by my house, and this girl was walking down the street, and she had a sleeping bag and a backpack, and she had obviously just woken up, so I asked her if she had slept in the park near my place and if she needed some food. And so she said yes, that she had slept in the park, and that she got a ticket for sleeping in the park. Isn't that stupid? She's homeless. She doesn't have any money, and she received a citation from a Ventura police officer for $137 for the act of sleeping. That's a human right. Someone that needs to sleep, needs to sleep. She was walking home from work. She has a job, but has no place to live, and she got tired, so she fell asleep in the park, and then the officer rudely awoken her, and now she has to pay money because she has no money. How stupid is that? Public transportation is a human right. There needs to be better public transportation in Ventura County. There needs to be public transportation that goes from downtown Ventura to the Ventura Transit Center, to the Oxnard Transit Center, to Union Station in downtown Los Angeles, so that we can be effective in getting our commuters from Ventura County to LA without burning millions of gallons of irreplaceable oil. Bathroom access is a human right, and shower access is a human right. The bathrooms at the beach on Seaward are closed at like eight or nine o'clock, and so what do you think the people that sleep outside are going to do when they need to go to the bathroom between nine o'clock and six o'clock in the morning? They're going to find somewhere to use as a bathroom that's not a bathroom. That's unsafe and unsanitary and degrading for them. Keep the bathrooms open all night. Keep the showers open all night, and maybe they wouldn't be so dirty. Maybe they'd be able to get a job if you had a shower for them to take every once in a while. Gardens. There need to be more community gardens in Ventura County, and they need to be publicly funded and available for anyone to work in at any time, and they need to support the community with good quality, non-genetically-modified vegetables and fruits. By the way, we're genetically modifying seeds in Monsanto at 2700 Camino del Sol, and that might be giving people cancer. The continent of Europe was wise enough to decline our genetically-modified wheat, and so now we're going to have a lot of poisoned wheat on the market here in America because we couldn't sell it to our European neighbors. I'm glad to see that gentleman a little earlier speaking about Robert Ramirez and Alfonso Limon. He actually didn't say Ramirez by name, but in five days is the one-year anniversary of the violent police terror act that ended Robert's life. The Oxnard Police Department beat him to death, and there are pictures of it, but there have been no charges filed against these violent racist officers. Alfonso Limon was a tragic accident. He looked like another guy they were looking for, and so they shot him in the back. That's against the Fourth Amendment and the Fifth Amendment, and is immoral, so you need to not be having your officers kill people. Fracking, that's going to kill people, too, because you've got the oil drilling out there in the Santa Barbara Channel, and then you've got the fracking up in the Ojai Valley, and fracking creates a little tiny earthquake. And as you know, we haven't had an earthquake in a long time, not a big one, so the fracking in the Ojai Valley is going to cause the oil rigs in the Santa Barbara Channel to leak gallons of oil into our national park, the Channel Islands National Park. And I just saw an article in the VC... no, the VC Reporter that some sea lion or seal or some other endangered animal in the ocean is being returned to Santa Cruz Island. That's wonderful, but what if the oil rigs break from an earthquake caused by fracking? Then that nice little endangered critter is going to be real sticky. Internationally, the country of Turkey is still seeing widespread protests, and I stand with the protesters, and I'd like the county of Ventura to pass a resolution asking Prime Minister Erawan to step down because he's implementing an Islamist government in the country of Turkey, and the people want to have a secular government instead. The country of Brazil is spending over a billion dollars on a new stadium for the World Cup, and they're also spending big bucks on the 2016 Olympics. Meanwhile, they're implementing austerity measures that are keeping people dying in hospital lines because they're unable to afford medicine, and they can't go to good schools, because their government is instead spending all this money on the World Cup and the Olympics, and so I'd like the county of Ventura to openly boycott the World Cup and the Olympics and the government of Brazil in solidarity with the people of Brazil to encourage them to spend money on human services and not on frivolous things like a World Cup stadium. Ask the Obama administration to free Bradley Manning and give him a full presidential pardon for his service for the country and informing us that we're being lied to by our military. Edward Snowden, the same. He's in Hong Kong, and I'd like you to get him a full presidential pardon by the Obama administration, and end the de facto ban on cannabis dispensaries by issuing licenses to cannabis dispensaries in Ventura County. Patients need their medicine.
Thank you.
Mr. Thayer, I just want to say that for a person with an open mind, for you to just stand and slander people, calling them racist, for example, with no evidence. So, I just... it's a little shocking to me.
They have been habitually killing Mexicans. I think that's a racist act. This guy, Stiles, has killed two Mexicans, and the previous speaker has speculated he has psychological issues that might be causing him to commit these violent acts. I agree with him.
Before we go to Board comments, we've got a couple of our leadership here. Maybe we can do some real quick items and get them through if we could. Okay? Why don't we go to... pardon? 10? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon? What was that? So, let's go to 41 first.
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Kelly Sherk, County Executive Office, Human Resources. The Board letter before you today asks for approval to amend the salary ranges of two positions, specifically the Chief Medical Examiner and the Assistant Chief Medical Examiner. County HR and the healthcare agency have been working together for the past year to fill a vacancy at the Assistant Chief Medical Examiner classification. We've conducted two separate recruitments for this position, and we've made four... excuse me, we've made six offers of employment to candidates, of which four declined the offer and two didn't complete the entire process at their decision. Nationwide, there's only 350 forensic pathologists, and only 20 to 30 new individuals come into the field each year. So, in addition, in California, the medical examiner must be a licensed physician and a surgeon with... qualified as a specialist in pathology. As you can see, we're drawing from a relatively small pool of applicants, and that they must meet these very high standards. The recommended 10% salary increase to both classifications will assist us in recruiting and retaining qualified individuals. Dr. Gonzalez is here to answer questions about the critical need of these positions, and I believe Sheriff Dean is also here to talk about how the impact to public safety occurs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comment? Thank you, Chair Foye and Ms. Sherk. Just to echo what Ms. Sherk said, this is really... it's been a tremendous effort to recruit for this position, and there's only two pathologists in the office, and Dr. Smith promoted up into the medical examiner position. He's doing a great job, but he just has not been able to fill this position, and we have not, despite all best efforts. So, that's how we arrive at this point and with this recommendation.
Great. Dr. Gonzalez, you have my comment?
I think Kelly has said it well. We're really in a situation that it's a very competitive market for medical examiner, and in fact, in California, there are about a half a dozen open positions right now. And so, this request is really to put us in a position that we can recruit a quality physician to join Dr. Smith. And I think one of the things that we've tried to do, and it's a many-year tradition in the medical system and the healthcare agency, is to try to get the very best and brightest to do the work, and this will help us make a step in that direction.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Sheriff, you may comment.
Chair Foye, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Jeff Dean, Sheriff. Unusual for me to be up here talking about pay raises for another department. It's a little tough, but you may not know, but in 46 of the 58 counties in the state of California, the sheriff is the coroner, and I am so grateful that we are not one of those counties. But as I meet with my peers several times during the year, one of the frustrations they face is trying to attract qualified medical examiners. They are just not out there. They're not anywhere, and there's struggles all over the state, and it goes on all the time. And the impact is not just to law enforcement, because certainly the medical examiner is an independent, critical part of criminal cases, but it's a huge impact to families. When you lose a loved one, someone passes away, that... when an autopsy is necessary, having that handled in a timely manner is so critical, not dragging on and on and on. We were very lucky to get Dr. Smith. He has just been... he's been outstanding, and I personally believe, and I know it's tough to get pay raises, and we're austere, and I can't believe Mr. Powers, who's a little on the frugal side, is actually supporting something like this. But it really is a critical position to law enforcement and to the public in general, and it's a tight market, and so I would encourage the Board to support this so we can get someone on board and get it done, because our cases actually, and the public's cases, are already backing up, just because there is nobody to handle it. And Dr. Smith can't work seven days a week, 20 hours a day, although we keep calling him to do that. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming out, Sheriff.
Yeah, I want to echo what the sheriff said. You know, I had one of my constituents that needed a death certificate, you know, for expenses and also for some additional revenues that she needed, because her husband had died, and I talked to Dr. Smith, and even though he was backed up, you know, and he didn't put anybody ahead of him, but they were backed up, and they were very efficient, and gave me the... gave my constituent the death certificate that gave her the benefits that she needed. So, they're very, very competent, and of course, underpaid, too, so... but I think that we need this Chief Medical Examiner. And they were said, you know, there's very few people that can really fill that... those... that salary and benefits, and also the information that's required to fill that position.
Well, I appreciate that you went out, tried to hunt, did everything you could. Before you just said, "We need raise." You probably knew where the market was, but you tried to do that first, and I agree that we've got to do whatever we can, but you've got to pay people on the markets there, and as the sheriff said, you know, all his colleagues talk about that, and as you... with 350 people in the country, that's amazing, and a few open spaces here. So, we've got a motion and a second on this, which I think... there you go. So, I think that's going to make it easy for you.
Thank you.
Or easier. Thank you. Appreciate that. And you are right, Jeff. It's hard to give raises like that, but you've got to do what you've got to do. Thank you.
Need to get folks to go to school.
Yeah. There you go. Okay. Who else is sitting here? Let's see if we have anything else. How about the library here? Oh, Paul's there. Well, let's do the library. We saw enough of you yesterday, didn't we?
Good morning. My name is Jackie Griffin. I am the director of the library, and it seems like only yesterday I was talking to you guys.
Did you catch any money on the way, or...
This is one of the better parts of my job. The people of the city of Ojai voted some years ago to tax themselves to have better library service, to have more books and to have more hours, and they have continued that tax. We need to talk to them about increasing it. It's no longer doing what it formerly did, but they are the one city in the county that taxed themselves in order... within our district, not speaking of other cities, that taxed themselves in order to have improved library services, and so I am bringing this here today to have it renewed, and I will take any questions.
Comments?
I think it's just another example. I mean, people of Ojai have been willing... you know, we saw at Oakview, people willing to tax themselves for the Oakview Park and Resource Center, the people of Ojai, and certainly we should support that by taking this fairly mysterious step.
It's hard to say something. The people want to do it themselves. That's true. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Dr. Gonzalez, number 42? Hang in there, Paul. Now you know what the judge feels like.
Board members, Mr. Powers, we come before you today to request the approval with regards to invoking Section 1104 of the SEIU MOA authorizing payment of overtime for healthcare agency IT staff impacted by our recent electronic health records. And I think you know all that we're doing. The Cerner electronic health record, the NetSmart system within behavioral health, and also our health plan Trizetto implementation. And we're coming up on a very, very rushed and difficult time because we're going to be going live with Cerner, which is a huge project July 1, and are expecting and anticipating for a few months after that to also have great needs. And IT staff has been terrific, working very hard and spending a lot of after-hours time performing their duties, and we're coming basically to request that we be allowed to pay them overtime for a period of time until we have further discussions with the staff, the union, our CEO's office about how to handle this. IT is a 24/7 business now, and certainly having hospitals, clinics, all of our medical services tied into electronic health records makes it a 24/7 operation.
Move the recommended action.
Okay. Supervisor Bennett moved it. Supervisor Park, second. Great. And I know that you're doing what you need to do to make it work, and you would be spending one of your time after. Mr. Powers?
I would just say a thank you to Dr. Gonzalez, as well as Kelly Sherk, Catherine Rodriguez, Jim Nibowski for working on this in partnership with SEIU to solve a complicated issue in the right. Good solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It seems like also one of the tremendous technological benefit that patients are going to reap, is millions of records being scanned and in there and identifiable and being able to be shared with medical professionals. It's going to help their... or help patients in the long run.
That's true. Thank you.
Implementing the Affordable Care Act, it's critical, but we're up and running and ready and have it as fine-tuned and operating as possible, so.
And you have a timeline up for that, right?
Very short timeline.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. It was approved. All right. So, let's move to Mr. Dursey.
Morning, Board members. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. As a reminder to your Board, the county is responsible for indigent defense, and in that regard, we have a public defender, and to back up the public defender, we have a contract with Conflict Defense Associates, and when those conflict defense run out, the judge appoints independent attorneys. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, in this regard, it doesn't happen that often, but in this particular case, there was a significant number of defendants, and fortunately, it doesn't happen that often. Unfortunately, we end up having to pay for it, and in this case, we expect it to exceed our budget by excess of a half a million dollars, so we're asking your Board to approve, transfer some funds from contingency to cover the cost of this.
And this is happening because of a major case going on?
Yes, major case. Happens very rarely. Our budget... this particular budget's a little over $2 million to run the, what we call, indigent defense. That's in addition to the public defender's office. The public defender's office handles most of the cases, and then we have the indigent defense to cover our conflict defense. If the public defender can only handle one of the defendants, so if there's multiple defendants, then you have to assign other attorneys. So, we have two layers of defense. That's a good... two layers of defense in our defense, but... and then the third one is the appointment by the judges, and in this case, there was a lot of defendants, so the judges appointed a lot of it outside... And in this case, there was a lot of defendants, so the judges appointed a lot of outside attorneys, so there's a lot of expense. And hopefully, this doesn't occur regularly for multiple reasons. It doesn't, hopefully, it doesn't occur regularly, but in this case, we do have to pay for the defense.
Okay. Yes?
Just to comment, I would hope that we're doing everything we can to scour, to look at where we might be able to look at federal dollars, other dollars to support this, because, you know, we certainly can't, wouldn't look for the district attorney to not do his job, but these cases are very costly. And...
And we are working with the courts in that regard to try to see if we can come up with some sort of methodology, maybe to have fixed rates and those types of, when the judge does appoint these outside attorneys.
Absolutely.
So, we're trying to work that angle also. But it's a cooperative effort between our office and the courts, and also the outside attorneys who are assigned to these cases. You know, they clearly want to make sure that they get competent attorneys, but at the same time, we want to also have, have an ability to at least control the cost. Because right now, the costs are a little bit beyond our control, less controllable than clearly with the public defender and the conflict defense group.
Because we have no choice to the attorney. When the judge says, "You're going to do it, you're going to do it," right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But I know that Mr. Chow is doing an excellent job in trying to drill down in areas that we can see where there's a charge for an attorney and an attorney fee versus an admin function that was performed. That's where we need, where we need to have a clear agreement with the courts that this is how the charges are assessed.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sheriff Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers.
I'm Boyd Donovan. I'm your assistant purchasing agent in GSA Procurement Services. And I apologize, we ultimately uploaded the wrong version of our letter, and it dropped recommendation number five. All reviewers saw the version with recommendation number five. We request that recommendation number five be added back for the record and approved by your honorable board.
There you go, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think that ends up all of our things except time certance. All right. We'll go to board comments. Supervisors Aragosa.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, just want to share that last week, I attended the Casa Pacifica Foster Youth Event, celebrating the milestones of those youth, you know. Supervisor Bennett has been the person involved there and doing a great job, and they missed you, so I was there, you know, you were gone, so it was great to, to kind of, they were really happy to share the milestones that they've accomplished, all the foster youth there. It was great, fifty-plus youth that, that would celebrate their milestones. In addition to that, I attended the Philippine Independence Day in Oxnard. That's one hundred and fifteen years of independence for the Philippines. That happens every year, and I've attended that ceremony probably for the last fifteen, sixteen years. Quite a few people there in Oxnard. Luris and Stan from my staff attended the Toastmasters Anniversary, I think it was the twentieth, and keynote speaker was Michael Powers, I understand, did a great job, is my understanding, as a Toastmaster. And additionally, I also attended the Charter School ACE Program, the IBW nine fifty-two by Tony Skinner over at Pacifica High School, the Architecture, Construction, and Engineering Program. Great, great program, where these kids learn construction work, or architecture, or engineering. By the time they graduate, they can actually build a house, you know, and this is just fantastic, the second year, and quite a few kids, not only young men, but young women too, were participants there, and they graduated, and they had a nice video on the work that they've done. It was just a great, great program. Juneteenth also, I attended that health fair in African-American independence in Plaza Park in Oxnard, and there was public safety individuals, public health individuals, and other individuals that were present there. It was just a great, great program. Hundreds of people attended that Juneteenth celebration in Oxnard. And of course, my staff attended other events on my behalf, so we had a busy, busy week.
Great.
And I don't have any adjournments on this, can you believe it?
That's wonderful.
Out of two-hundred-plus-thousand people.
Keep it up.
That's right. Thank you. Supervisor.
Yes, thank you. I have a list to also submit to adjourn in memory, calling out one of them, Joseph C. Nesbit from Santa Paula, longtime, very active, engaged member of the community, served on the Santa Paula High School Board, the Ventura County Planning Commission, and years ago on LAFCO, and also on the Santa Clara Valley Bank Board, and just a real community contributor, and he'll be missed. And we heard all the good, the bad, and the ugly yesterday on the state budget, so I won't go on that. They're going on summer break, so we can all breathe easy. Yeah, no damage, no damage rather gone.
Milestone in the budget.
Certainly continue to track how things, as details roll out more. Just to mention quickly that tomorrow at eight a.m., Whole Foods is opening at the Oxnard Collection Center. That's exciting news. Exciting news. We love Whole Foods.
The first family of people again get a, kind of treated.
I won't be in that line, but some of my staff might be.
That's right.
Well, I did actually have the pleasure of watching Mr. Powers under the gun at the Toastmasters, giving his speech, where they're like, the whole time, you know, how long it takes them to do it, and his poise, and his confidence, and his grammar, and oh my, you talk about pressure, and I can't just give a speech, but he did, he did quite well, thankfully. And then also, I had, had the pleasure of being able to award Mel Silverberg, won a commendation for being the Thousand Oaks Senior of the Year. That was a really nice choice, and we just reappointed him last week to the area agency on aging, so he's a great addition, both working for affordable housing, but also healthcare-first senior citizens. So, nice to have someone from Thousand Oaks recognize someone working so closely with the county and doing such good things. I also attended the Veteran of Foreign Wars Eleventh Annual Reef Lane Ceremony on Flag Day at the Thousand Oaks City Hall, which is a very nice ceremony. And I think I'll pass it on to Supervisor Bennett till I get my voice back.
Thank you. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of introducing Christina Miranda, she interning here this summer, but she also works at Casa Pacifica, and wanted to make sure all the board members know that she's organized. Very important national speaker is going to be at Casa Pacifica this evening. The topic is the exploitation of transitional-age foster youth that's going on in the country, and it's, it's an issue that we all need to take seriously and be aware of, and I'll be attending this evening, and if any of you can work it in your schedule, I think you'd find it a very beneficial presentation. I'm sorry to report that William Bill Lycan's, employee of County Public Works and the City of Ventura, was also a big leader and advocate for foster children, has passed away. And Johnny Tony Barraris, lifelong resident of Ventura and founder of the famous Tony's Pizzeria in downtown Ventura, proud U.S. Army veteran, passed away. And also, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the other people on this list. Thank you very much.
All right, let's go again.
I'll see if I can finish up, not feeling all that well today. I also was delighted to go to Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Scott McDonald and Alex Kouchan over the weekend, and also attended the Rotary Club of Westlake Village, helped to put on the annual Oak Heart Country Music Festival at the, at the Caneo Valley Days site in Thousand Oaks, working with the Borderline Grill. There were thousands of country fans and country music, and it was a delight, and money raised, went to help the Wounded Warrior Project. So it was a great event, and just amazing to see what social media will do in terms of getting you turnout. But a lot of folks there. And then we also had a compliment to our environmental health department in terms of coming out to the site and checking out our, the food purveyors. And I know I also had a really great experience when we had the Ventu Park Fire Safe Fair, and environmental health was out there, and just very friendly, and working with the Kiwanis in that case, and helping them get their permit. And I think it was just a dandy that what we were able to do in terms of being able to give a program where nonprofits can get, you know, a permit for a year instead of every time they're coming out. So I think that that will help a lot, and appreciated by the Kiwanis. And then, kind of, I did take offense with Mr. Thayer this morning in terms of, you know, how quickly he can just, you know, slander people and murderers and racists when you're talking about people who are sworn to protect the public safety and are out there working hard to protect us and saving lives. So it's just, we brush him off, but he's, having him speak left unretorted to me, just it needed something. We, it's part of, I know, our rights of freedom of speech, but in this particular case, it just was very caustic.
Yeah, I appreciate you willing to say something. Sometimes you sit there and just bite your lip on some of that stuff, and I appreciate that. Yeah. I too want to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and also, I don't know if you have, people have met, Mike probably has, the new city manager out of Simi, Eric Levitt? Yeah, yeah. Good guy. I think it's going to be big shoes to fill, but a good opportunity to be involved in a good city, so it's good. Also, the Moore Park Military Salza Festival on Moore Park College, raising money for the troops coming back. I've always, always liked to see people doing that. How much better than a Salza Festival to do that, you know? So it's good. And again, yesterday, we had our budget, things went well, and I was appreciative again to everybody for, and Mike and your leadership on that, so thank you very much. And it was, was good to hear, you know, the county agencies, you don't always get to hear that, but it was wonderful that man came out, because there's no question that there's been a real effort, and I, again, CEO's office and all the different department heads really tried to say, you know, "We are here to serve the public, and we have certain things we need to do. We are regulators in ways, but we don't have to be regulators, you can't do anything. We're just regulators to make sure the public is safe, but you can go on with your events. We're here to help you do that." And that was what we heard today, and I thought that was really good, especially when those guys are into their contests, and they're going to do their meeting, "Okay, I'll hold back, we can wait, we can wait, it's not the end of the world." That was just nice to hear that, and somebody willing to spend twenty or thirty minutes to drive out here in the morning to do that, and I think that's, it just says a lot for our people that are working really hard to do the right thing, so that's good. Okay. We can go to closed session for about twenty-five minutes for, and we have any announcement coming out of closed session?
No, we will not have any announcements.
Okay, then we'll come back for our ten o'clock time certain. Great, thank you. Come back to order. Item number twenty-seven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's that time of year again, and where we're going to celebrate and help to kick off the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Ventura County Greek Festival and Greek Heritage Week. And I'd like to invite Father Gary, who's here from the Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church, and friends, and as I just read a few words of this resolution, and then ask him to talk a little bit about, a little bit about the festival. We do this every year, and why do we do this? Because it's important to do. This is both heritage of the Greek community, and certainly of the Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church, the only one in our county, established in October of nineteen seventy-seven on our Camrio Airport grounds, with certainly a handful of faithful Greek Orthodox Christians. They purchased the chapel and established the church, and they hold this festival every year, and it's just a great celebration of all things Greek heritage. It's home to approximately two hundred Orthodox families. It's the only Greek Orthodox church in our county, as I said, and it has, sir, it has been just a great annual celebration with the festival. It's a way of celebrating Greek heritage and culture, includes activities for families, dancing groups, Greek-themed arts and crafts. The Boy Scouts of America has a complete encampment where they support the festival, and they provide offerings of wonderful Greek food and celebration. And it is declaring the week of June seventeenth through the twenty-third. The festival actually starts on Friday, and it is again to celebrate that, and it goes through the whole weekend, and it's just a pleasure. I've always enjoyed having the Greek community as a part of Camrio, but certainly a part for all of us in Ventura County to celebrate and to honor Greek Heritage Week and the festival. Father Gary, I'll step down and present this.
Thank you very much. Father Gary Kiriyaku from Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church, and it's an honor to be here again, and I want to thank you for honoring us with the, bestowing upon us the Greek Heritage Week. I brought some pastries. I don't think I heard you mention the pastries.
Oh, she mentioned them back there before we came out, yeah.
But the pastries are here. Things are going great at the church right now. It's buzzing, and people are setting up and doing all the great things. The ladies are still actually baking more pastries today, so I went in there and took what I could from them. So, a little sampling for you here, they go good with coffee. I brought my daughter Elena and my son Jacob with me as well, to help me bring the pastries in, and so they're acting shy, but they're not really. I wanted to just mention two things if I could. The first one is, thank you for your support with everything. We have just finished the first phase of our construction project on Wood Creek and Santa Rosa roads. We put in the parking lot, brought in all the utilities, the plumbing and all those things. In the fall, we're hoping to begin construction on our new building, and hopefully, a year from now, we'll be having the festival at the new property. So, this will definitely be the last festival at Skyway Drive, the thirty-fifth one, and the last one at Skyway Drive, and then next year, we'll hopefully be at Wood Creek and Santa Rosa.
That's exciting.
So, very exciting. The second thing is more of a personal one, and I wanted to, I saw Dr. Rob Gonzalez back there, and wanted to thank him, and mention that I had a wound on my leg that was treated by Dr. Starr and the VCMC, and I can't tell you how pleased I was, and I wanted Mr. Powers to know that you should be very thrilled to have doctors of that caliber in your county taking care of people. And they took me in right away, treated my wound, and made me feel like a million bucks. So I'm ready to dance now. All right? So, thank you, I appreciate that.
We are very proud of them, thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on, babes.
Come on up.
Come on, let's get a picture. Will we see you at the festival? Going to dance?
Both of them will be dancing at the festival, so you'll see them dancing. They'll be performing.
It's my favorite part. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. Thanks for your support.
We, I get the opportunity, I come to the county, I drive Santa Rosa Road, get to see your construction going on, and your park, I said, your park. It really is.
It really is. And some of the neighbors up there who I was worried about, the noise and the construction, have actually invited me to their backyards to watch the construction going on, so.
Oh, that's great.
I'm able to document it from up there as well.
That's nice.
So it's really nice. So everybody's happy with it.
It's really...
We've promised for it to be a landmark in Ventura County.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it looks great what you're already doing, it's going to be a nice corner there, it's...
Sure, I'm sorry, I don't want to take too much time. But I was in Vons up the street, and a gentleman pulled me aside and said, "Are you the priest that's building down?" and a gentleman pulled me aside and said, are you the priest that's building down at the bottom of the hill? And I said, yeah. And he says, when is the park going to be finished? And I said, park? He said, why aren't you building a park? And I said, no, we're building a church. And he says, oh, so beautiful. It looks like a park. And I said, well, I said, thank you. I'll take that as a compliment and continue to enhance the
Have to tell them to come on back.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, congratulations.
Hope to see you at the festival.
Well, thank you.
I'll be there fragging them.
See you there, kids.
Thank you.
All right. That's great. Okay. We'll move on to item number 28, which will have a public hearing. So we have our staff presentation here. So you want to eat some of the food?
Good morning, Chair. Chair Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Regal Vargas, Public Health Director, here before you to ask for your approval to make permanent a fee schedule that goes along with our safer sex in the adult film industry ordinance that your board recently approved, I believe it was May 7th. So with this approval, it would make that temporary 30-day fee, make it permanent. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Do you want to make comments, Supervisor?
I'll, I'll go ahead and move the item and appreciate the collaboration in putting this forward. And it's one of those permits that may never be issued because part of it is that because Los Angeles County required a permit for these adult movies, everyone's moving away from LA. So I don't think they'll be wanting to do it here either.
Before you make a motion, I would need to open a public hearing.
Yeah.
See if we have any speakers on this at all? No? No speakers? Okay. Nobody wishes to speak. Then we'll close public hearing. Another comment?
And I'd like to certainly second the motion and appreciate working with the supervisor and with the staff. They've done an outstanding job in a, in a short amount of time to address this and to offer the residents of our county some, I think some understanding of, of now we have the safeguards in place to make sure that we keep a safe and healthy community. So thank you.
Okay, so Thank you, Regal.
Thank you. If I may, just to take a moment to thank, thank your board, Mr. Powers, for the ongoing support, not only to the Public Health Department, but all our sister departments in the healthcare agency. It's been very much appreciated during the budget process. You know, I know you guys approved, reported approved, an increase to our budget to mainly respond to tuberculosis and other communicable diseases. But I know all the efforts going on with the Affordable Care Act, with our sister departments, you guys have been great in helping us establish positions and help us with the budget. And it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, sir.
And you really took the department's helm and have been moving forward. And this is one of the first.
Supervisor, Steve? Great. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to, we're still a little early for our 10:30, huh? Where's the coffee for the people? Right behind you. All right, we'll come back to this meeting and we'll move to our 10:30 time cert, number 29. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our opportunity, as we do yearly, to receive the first five of Ventura County's operating budget presentation. All of you know who first five is and what a great addition to our county first five has been since it was supported by the voters of the state of California to dedicate some funds to improving children's lives. So Claudia Harrison has been its first and longstanding executive director, does a great job for all of us. And she's going to present the operating budget to us, which is a summary. And, and thank you, Claudia. Please come forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. Good morning. Thank you, Chair of the Board, members of the Board, members of the executive staff. We really appreciate this opportunity to come before you each year to present our budget. I also wanted to particularly thank the board this year as well for denoting 2013 as the year of the child. Thank you. And I think it's really a wonderful recognition of the work that's done throughout the county on behalf of children. So you'll notice she's not counting her pennies up there. She's planning her pennies. That kind of goes along with the theme, planned budget here. So I'd like to do is to walk you through, you do have a packet of information that has your budget. I'm going to talk about a few highlights from our evaluation report that's in your packet as well, as well as the handouts from the presentation. So to begin with, for revenues, and again, you'll see some of these numbers better in the packet in front of you. But just in terms of an overview, we are projecting a continued 4% decline in the tobacco tax revenues, which is what we've projected each year. It's around probably somewhere between 3% and 4%. We like to be a little conservative on that when we plan our expenditures. Some years it's 10 or 12%, and other years it's been a little less than 3. If you recall, we started about $12 million and we're at 7.5 million projected for the coming year. What you do see here that we're really rather excited about is $1.6 million in leveraged funds for this year alone. Our five-year financial plan has included $5.6 million in leveraged funds. And this is a combination of federal funds, state funds, and some private funds as well. You'll also see a planned use of our allocation from prior years, and that's about a $4.2 million. And again, we have a rolling five-year financial plan and we intentionally want to make sure that we can keep services on the street and maintain some stability in that. Finally, that was the operating fund. Finally, you see the Community Investment Loan Fund. This came from an initial allocation we made back in 2000 when we first started accruing revenues. And basically, this was a commitment to have low-cost financing for expansion of preschool spaces. And so we are continuing with that this coming year. Moving on towards expenditures, basically what you see in expenditures is the third funding year in our five-year strategic plan. And what you see here is, is that we're staying the course. We have a strong service system. We have an integrated service system. And our intentionality in using those allocated funds from prior years is to be able to stay the course and not to be able, not to have a funding cliff that drops off at the end of one year. One of the things that we've always been particularly proud of is our low administrative expense. You'll see that it's projected as 4.6%. Our targeted cap has always been 5.5%, but we try to do better than that. And we're projecting the 4.6% for this coming year. You'll also see expenditures for the Community Investment Loan Fund. We did last year make our first loan. And as a result, we have 62 new preschool spaces in Fillmore, a highly, highly underserved area, which we're really excited about. I'm told they have a waiting list and they're looking forward to expanding. So I'm hoping to see more. We anticipate four loans in this coming year. And I'm told by our partner, EDCVC, that they're actually in progress. And there's actually been loan board meetings to further that. So it's very exciting as a way to get additional services. What we do see also is, is that our loan administration expenses, which are fairly low at about $30,000, are offset by interest expenses, both from loan repayments as well as our current interest rates. So that's the revenue. So basically what we're seeing in our operating is a $13.4 million expenditure budget and about a 1.2 for the Community Investment Loan Fund. What I'd like to share with you as well are some highlights from our annual report. And again, as I mentioned, this is contained in your packet as well. But a couple of things in terms of what are we seeing in terms of our results? One is, last year, and this is our 11-12 report that we released in February 2013, our funded partners saw over 6,500 children and 4,350 parents in services. These are core intensive services. These aren't just, they came by one day. These are kids who came repeatedly to preschool or parents and kids together that went to birth to three classes or parent education classes. What we know is, is that about three quarters of the population that we serve are from traditionally underserved and at-risk populations. And so we are really reaching the people who we know will benefit at most. That year, we served over 5,000 children in receiving developmental screenings. And this was a partnership with Land and Pediatric Foundation, but with the county clinics and with the Public Health Department through their health educators as well. Also through public health, we were able to screen over 2,800 pregnant women. And that represented 29 clinic locations. And these are women who are being screened for substance abuse during pregnancy. I think we all know the results of what happens of substance abuse during pregnancy. This is to get screening to be as commonplace as high blood pressure checking and diabetes checking and really to have it be part of the protocol. And public health, working with the county clinics, has just made tremendous, tremendous progress in this area. Also
Could, could I, could I ask, Claudia, where, where are we with the private physicians in this?
It's been an uphill battle. Yeah. I mean, basically, it's the 29 clinic locations, the vast, vast majority. I think we have just a handful of private. So it's been, it's been difficult to do that. But they persist.
Dr. Paul Russell has just been a champion. And he's just been reaching out to the private physicians in clinics and, and I, I believe talking to the Medical Association and others to impress upon them the importance of doing this.
When, when, when you see our foster parents in here with the drug addicted babies and you, and you see the damage, you just go, this is a huge issue to invest in. So I applaud you for doing it. And I just hope as many private physicians as possible can be brought aboard to join the public physicians doing this.
I know. And actually, thanks to Supervisor Long and some great comments during our commission meetings. There's also been a movement to not only work and consult with private clinics, but to increase demand from the population and to really get the awareness out there. And so that this is something that people are expecting, asking for, and need to be part. So it's tremendous progress, but yes, indeed, there, there's certainly more to go as well.
Is there any analysis of the developmental screening that's done for the 5,000 children? Is there some kind of analysis done, you know, from a mass perspective, looking at certain conditions that may be more specific to certain areas?
Basically, it's a screening, so it's not diagnostic and it's not a full assessment in the sense of really coming down to defining a condition. The analysis that we do do though is, is that what we don't want to do is just go out and screen. It's okay, you've been screened. We reach a continuum. And so if we identify something, did we refer you? Did you get services? Did you get into early start? Did you get into the school district? Did you get into an NFL program? So that kind of analysis is what we generally look at with the screening as opposed to the prevalence of the conditions. But thank you for the question. And I think we can see what we can do to kind of go back and see what can we glean from the information they have.
Thanks.
And then more than 12,000 children receive fluoride varnish applications. This is an exciting program. This also is a partnership with public health right now through the CHDP program. And what this is primarily doing part is about 5,000 is actually through the Dental Society. The Lion Share is through public health, working again in the clinics with the family practice physicians, recognizing that kids go and see a doctor, I think the number is about 10 times before they'll see a dentist. And so if we can get doctors to do an oral health screening and very, very simple fluoride varnish, we can really turn the tide here and make a difference. And so we do allocate dollars for treatment as well, but we've really put a high intensive effort towards what we can we do in terms of the prevention.
And Claudia, that's an extremely important program because once you take care of your teeth, you know, that eliminates a lot of illnesses in the future, you know, which I think is extremely important.
Exactly, exactly. Oral tooth decay is one of the high, most highly prevalent chronic conditions in childhood. We can't get in front of that. Once there's been decay, we just don't have the resources to be able to do that. To say nothing about, not the resources to treatment, but the cost to that child, pain, missed school days, et cetera. So if we can get in front of it with prevention, we're making a difference.
12,000 children is a lot. That's, that's good. That's a lot of children, too.
Yeah, we're, we're excited about that.
Could I ask, please, how long have you been doing this, trying to do this in the clinics rather than, you know, funding dentists?
Probably a good five or six years, I would say. And maybe I'm underestimating.
Nice change. Yeah, that's a great change.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's great. We also like to ask so what. So I can give you numbers and we're proud of it, but there's also the so what. So in terms of some of those so whats, we, and when I say we, it's our partners at public health through the HOPE program enrolled over 1,700 children in programs. So if that's not good enough, are they using their benefits? So we go back and we follow up. And what we found is that over 90% of them had a medical doctor that they got linked to and they had a well-child exam, which is our proxy for saying, yes, they utilize their benefits. Very important. It's not just the numbers. It's what they're doing with it. We have a partnership with Behavioral Health for the Triple P Program, which is a positive parenting program. We go back and look and 93% of children who received intensive services did indeed show a reduction in their problem behaviors. We look at our preschool kids. It's good to send them. We know that's wonderful, but is it doing anything? And we see that 86% of all preschool participants showed evidence that they were school-ready to enter kindergarten. So it's kind of the reach and the impact, both at the same time. So I can sit here and talk about what we, 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 but I tried to pepper it with who else did it with us because it's not just us. As I've said before, we have the good fortune of being able to write the check and have the funding and make the planning. But it's without our partners that this work wouldn't happen. And as you've heard, the county of Ventura has been an incredibly important partner. I think, I don't know, probably five or, five out of the six things I mentioned on the previous two slides, really they're a result of our partnership with, with the county of Ventura, mostly with the healthcare agency. In addition, our school districts host our Neighbors for Learning in 10 out of our 11 different sites, community-based organizations, service clubs, and local businesses. You've heard me say before from the very beginning, parents have been our most important partner. And we've always wanted to make sure they're involved. We recently did a survey and we found that approximately 335 parents were involved in NFL governance, committee work, and as volunteers. Super excited about that. So it's kind of at the level of engagement that they're ready for, we're able to get them involved. We also, one of our original visions for our Neighbors for Learning is that they would do extensive linkages with their local community. And we found that throughout our 11 NFLs in total, they have closer to 200 community partnerships. And these represent the partnerships that you see above, which has just really been outstanding. So I just want to give you a little example of what this meant to Maria's family. This is not Maria because I, that would really not be a good thing to do. So this is a standard for Maria. But Maria was a young child, a three-year-old in a monolingual Spanish-speaking family. And she was seen by a public health nurse, of which we do not fund, but we have a lot of partnerships with the public health nurses who noticed that she seemed to have some developmental delays. She brought in a health educator. And again, we do fund the health education, the developmental screening, to do a screening on this child and found that yes, indeed, that she was missing developmental milestones in language, cognition, and in motor skills. And so she did it as a home visit. And there's a beauty about being able to do that kind of home visitation because you take in the whole environment. So this health educator noticed that this family is very isolated, not a good thing, that the child had very little indoor play. It was basically the TV and wasn't allowed to play outdoors at all because of this, the comfort level. And so she took that whole look. She didn't just say, okay, you know, developmental screening, I'm going to refer on and I'm done. She basically worked with the mom to help her figure out how to change the home environment into a learning environment. She knew that there was a program at the Ventura Neighborhood for Learning that she could indeed refer this child to. She also knew that the family couldn't get there. So she mapped out transportation. She tapped into the transportation system and figured out for the family, how could they get there by public transportation? And did. As a result, Maria was enrolled in programs to really help her with her development. And mom got family, social, and community connections that she would have never had before, which we know is key to thriving children. So just to see how it comes altogether like that. One of the things that I just wanted to talk about briefly is, is that this emerging theme that's happened in Ventura County that I'm sure you've all experienced in your work as well. We've always been thought of as a really collaborative county that sits at the same table. But what's been happening is, is that I think our collaboration's been moving to a different level in terms of shared vision, shared problems, shared identification. It's no longer, I It's no longer, I want to do this, can you help me do this? It's, we have a common problem. Can we define what that problem is? Can we define what we'd like it to look? And together, can we figure out how each of us bring resources to do that? It's exciting. Collective Impact, some you may have heard of. It's kind of some people call it the flavor of the month. Some people call it just new language for something we've always done. Some people say new concept. And I say, yes, it's all of the above, and it doesn't matter. It gives us a framework to talk about it and gives us language. It's a commitment of a group of actors from different sectors to really come together on a common agenda for solving complex social problems. It gives us a shared lens, a shared framework, shared language. The reason I bring this up is because this isn't just First Five. This is First Five sometimes as a convenor, sometimes as a participant, and sitting along county colleagues as well. We've been able to do some incredible things in Ventura County. Strengthening Families, Five Protective Factors is a common framework. We've had several convenings. We've been working with strategies and interface. And it's a common way for all of us, no matter whether we work with kids, birth to three, five, birth to 18, seniors, it doesn't matter. How do we look at making life better for families? How do we look at what families need? Our Oral Health Collaborative, that's been spearheaded by United Way, lots of participation from the county as well. How do we really look from access, prevention, to treatment to really make a difference in oral health? Developmental Screening Collaborative, I spoke about briefly. I know you know about Ventura County Together. Coalition of Service Providers, looking at basic needs. And finally, a seamless quality rating system for preschools that we've been able to blend different funding together. So what I want to do is just, to me, this has been inspirational, and I just wanted to share it with you. And I will share it with you a little bit in a, now it'll decide not to work. There we go. Sharing our collective vision and what it looks like. Now, remember, I'm an early childhood person, so I come with an early childhood frame of mind. So I'm going to liken some of this to child development and how child, how play develops developmentally. So what we see first, we see a sandbox. All kids play in sandbox. But what we know, that in many counties, that's what the sandbox looks like. No one goes in it. No one sits in it. There's not even collaboration. What we see in the development of children is that eventually you get to a place that's parallel play. You're kind of playing next to each other. You know what each other's doing. You're not sharing, you're not doing anything. And I think early stages of collaboration often do look like that. Not anymore in Ventura County. You slowly move to a place where you're kind of sharing and having a common vision. They are really scoping out that hole together. I hope that you can see that. They're planning, they're looking at it, they're really doing that together. This is kind of, for me, the progression of what a lot of this has happened with our, we talk about partnerships, and we talk about collaboration, and then we move to a place of collective vision. And what happens is when you see that intentionality and that shared vision, you see results that could have never been possible, absolutely phenomenal results. And that's what's happening in Ventura County for children. Thank you so very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Appreciate you putting that last part in, something I could understand with the sandbox.
Don't you want to kind of be there?
Yeah. I think that was a sandbox that Mike built for Charlie on the beach.
Exactly.
Good collaboration.
Okay, well, thank you, Claudia, as always. Appreciate that this does come to the board once a year. She also takes us out to other stakeholder groups, and it's good to capture both the success, the challenges, and how wonderful it is that we have the opportunities with First Five to build stronger families and great kids for the future. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really like the collective agenda concept, and it's one that's easy for people, paid lip service to, and it's another thing to actually get it done. And I really feel like First Five is making some real strides, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Mr. Chair, you know, getting the parents involved, I think, is extremely important, and you're doing that very well with NFL and all the players working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to echo, there's a lot of great programs we have here in the county, and Claudia's identified a lot of them, but they're so much more powerful when they're brought together in one location, through one sort of guide to help the families through this. I mean, to have the varnish, the pre-screening, the four Ps screening program, the Triple P for parents, so to come at it from every angle is really remarkable. So thank you for having that spirit of collaboration to make that sandbox possible. And thanks for showing my castle.
Thanks, Claudia.
Receiving that. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
One more. One more.
It's good. All right, so we'll go from sandcastles to a public hearing, Engineering Report. Here you go, sir.
Hard to compete with sandcastles.
That's right.
Good morning, Chair Foye, Board, Mr. Powers. My name is Greg Bergman for the General Services Agency. Item 30 is the third and final time, I'll be before your board this year, to discuss the benefit assessment process for the Oakview School and Preservation Maintenance District. On May 7th this year, the Engineers Report received preliminary approval and set the public hearing for today. The recommended actions are that you receive public testimony and that you adopt the resolution approving the Engineers Report. This is about the 12th year of the assessment, and there have been a lot of projects completed to date. Subsequent to the budget development process, our Facilities and Maintenance Group went out and did an assessment of the site. They identified a few things that are going to be necessary in the upcoming, in the next year and in the upcoming years. We are planning accordingly with the funds that we do have, but we have some things that will definitely need to take place in fiscal year 13, 14, so we will likely be back to your board requesting additional appropriations to do that. Ones that we currently have, they just aren't budgeted for right now. Certainly available to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions?
Board members, great, great project. I really appreciate the collaboration with the county staff. Greg's been really, I think, a good, a real good professional help for the people out there, the volunteers and the one professional staff person that's been hired to sort of do that. And Greg's really worked with them well. They are maximizing dollars like you wouldn't believe. They re-sodded, you know, this old, overgrown field, they re-sodded that whole field. They had sod donated and, you know, things. So they're just doing great work out there. It's a wonderful site. If you ever get a chance to drive by and you see a before and after picture, you'd really be pleased. Again, it's a classic example of the community taxing themselves for this benefit, so I'd move the recommended action.
Okay, well, we need to open a public hearing first. Yeah, public hearing? Is there any, do any speakers? Nope? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Now you go ahead.
I'll remove the recommendation.
There you go. All right, we have a second by Supervisor Parks. All right.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, then we'll move on to item 31, the man himself.
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, I am Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. And while I don't have a castle for you this morning, hopefully demonstrate some advancement in our playtime development. In November, we reported to the board that the Santa Rosa Valley Trails Incorporated group had agreed to fund the development of a trail plan out in their community, and the board directed us to do a couple of things. One was to prepare a request for proposal and issue that, and attempt to get a consultant on board to prepare that plan. And the other was to develop an agreement with the Santa Rosa Valley Trails group for the funding of that effort. So what we have before you today are those matters. And we issued the request for proposal and received one response from Rincon Consultants, a local consulting firm many of you are probably familiar with. It was responsive to our request for proposal and within our estimated budget amount. So we worked with our GSA folks. Rosa Sedenceros was very helpful to us there. And I also worked with Ron Van Dyke and Dave Fleisch. They helped me review the proposals. And I'm happy to recommend to you today that the board approve and authorize us to execute a contract with Rincon Consultants in an amount of $75,003 to prepare that plan. And also, at this time, we've been working with the county council's office and have developed a funding agreement with the Santa Rosa Valley Trails group to provide that funding, and that is also before you today, recommendation that you authorize us to enter into that agreement. We have Mark Burley from Santa Rosa Valley Trails Inc. is here today if you have any questions related to their group. But I think that pretty much covers my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, before we open public, this is? No, it's not, okay. Then, any questions before we maybe hear Mark? He's got a speaker card?
Go ahead and hear Mark first.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. I'm Mark Burley, I'm president of Santa Rosa Valley Trails Inc. I came before you in November. I just briefly want to say that we worked with Rincon Consultants when we were producing the GIS maps that were the first trail maps for the whole of Santa Rosa Valley, which are actually part of this package, and you saw last time. So we're very happy that they have offered to continue to work with us to finalize this. And finally, I'd like to just say that, you know, we're continuing to try to make this as easy as possible and be a cooperation with the government to get this through and get a general plan amendment, hopefully eventually when we're done with this. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
My thanks to you, Mr. Burley, for putting this forward, and it's gone at a pretty glacial speed. It started out in 2008 with the concept, and actually, well before then, this has always been something that's been visioned for Santa Rosa Valley. And for example, the City of Thousand Oaks, I know, has their trail plan, so when projects come before them, they, our housing developments, they can set aside some trails so we can have a continuous trail. So while that was done all with public funds, the fact that your organization stepped up and are paying the lion's share of this so that others, you know, for, you know, decades to come will be able to use these trails, thanks to your efforts. So I thank you, and I also want to thank Mr. Stevens for shepherding this through because it is something new, something that we haven't done before, and it seems like the theme has been collaboration. So having that collaboration with the private sector, this nonprofit organization and the county is going to allow anyone in the public to be able to use these trails. So just a great appreciation for you stepping up and funding this to the amount that you have, and look forward to it becoming successful and having that ability. The only portion that the county is paying of this then is just so that we can incorporate it into our general plan, which would be necessary. So unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and move the recommendation, and again, our thanks.
We have a first and a second? All right, there you go. That glacier is finally starting to melt and moving.
Yes.
All right, since we are right on time at 11 o'clock. Boy, who set this meeting up? Man. All right, so we, in that case. So we'll move on to a public hearing, considering the recommendation for emergency medical services. Well, he comes in right on time.
See, I'm asking how to respond.
That's-
Yes. Chairman Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Steve Carroll, Emergency Medical Service Administrator. And before you today is a few items related to our ambulance service agreements. Recommendation number one is the EMS Advisory Committee's review of the ambulance provider performance, and also their recommendation to grant two-year extensions to the term of their agreements. Recommendation two is the actual amendments to the agreements and those terms to be extended for the additional two years. And then also the addition of a nurse, specialty care transport nurse category to allow for the ambulance providers to seek reimbursement for a service that they're now providing on a 24/7 basis in our county. And then lastly, recommendation number three sets the rates, the maximum allowable chargeable rates for the ambulances for fiscal year 13, 14. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Comments, questions?
My question is, to the length of the term of the contract, all the way to 2017, is that unusual?
The original contract was a six-year contract, started in 2005, and it was a six-year contract, and there's 10 years of two, I'm sorry, five two-year extensions built in that if they meet the requirements, then they are granted two-year extensions. So they have, this is our fourth of those two-year extensions, so this will actually take it to 2019.
2019, right.
We'll have one more of the two-year renewal reviews in 2015, which would take them to 2021, and that's the end of the possible extension of this contract.
Okay, well, I guess the safeguard then is we're looking at it every couple of years, but it gives them some certainty in terms of their investment, too.
Absolutely.
Right, which is important, yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
It's nice to have it coordinated and working as well as it is.
It's a great system.
All right, let's make them, oh, it's a public hearing, that's right. So I need to open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
This all got vetted through the EMS Advisory Group that we have, correct?
Correct.
It did. All right, anybody out there wish to speak? Nobody wishes to speak, then we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Good, thank you, and I keep this up moving forward. This is good.
Thank you very much.
Good vendor, good vendors we're working with, that's great. All right, so we'll move on to item 33, Public Hearing Adoption Resolution Continuing the Proposed Sewer Services. Mr. Pakala.
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Ready Pakala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. I will be presenting the next three items on your agenda today, and this is the time when we bring our sewer rates to your board. This, item 33, is for County Service Area Number 30, which provides sanitation services to the community of Naranacres. All of the sewage from the community of Naranacres is discharged to the City of Oxnard for treatment and disposal. And as you're aware, this is outside the City of Oxnard city limits. That's why we have a special sewer district there. We are not recommending any sewer rate increases for the upcoming fiscal year. However, we are recommending that your board adopt a resolution in our staff report which authorizes collection of sewer standby charges and sewer service charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. I'm available to take any questions you might have.
I do just have, what, whenever there's a proposal for no rate increase, I just always want to raise the issue of making sure we don't engage in deferred, you know, not that we do it, but there are some small, particularly some water districts in the county that I think have gotten in the habit of keeping the rates really low and then letting the infrastructure fall apart and then having a real problem. So I just want to raise that. I know we're not doing that, but I will raise that particular issue, and don't want to go too long with no rate increase to cover those kind of things. Thank you.
All right.
And I'd like to come in ready for Excellent Job again.
Yeah.
All right.
If I may, suppose, Bennett, as your board has made similar comments in the past, we take into account whether we need to make recommendations for rate increases. If we feel there have to be recommendations, we'll bring them back to your board. In this particular situation, CSA 30, Naranacres, we used to have a very expensive sewer system called Step System. And since we converted that into a conventional gravity system, we were able to maintain the cost down. That's the reason we are not recommending any sewer rate increases.
Thank you.
Great. So we'll open a public hearing. Any speakers? No speakers? Don't see any. I think we do everybody out there. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And so we have a motion and a second? All right, there you go. 34.
Thank you. Item number 34 is also a public hearing for Ventura County Waterwork District Number One, which provides water supply to the City of Moore Park and areas to the north and west of the city. District charges, water standby charge for vacant parcels within the district service area, and also where we have an existing water line adjacent to this vacant parcel in accordance with the water code. We are recommending that your board authorize, adopt the resolution in our staff report which authorizes collection of this water standby charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. I'm available to take any questions you might have.
Questions? Only thing coming is, you're collecting $1,966? Probably costs you more than that to come up here. We probably have a public hearing, we'll open a public hearing. No comments, no cards, no see, nobody wanted to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have a motion, huh? motion, huh? That's 34, you got 35, sir.
Thank you. Item number 35 is also a public hearing for Ventura County Waterwork District Number 17, which provides water supply to the community of Bell Canyon. Just very similar to District One, we are recommending that board adopt a resolution for collection of the water standby charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. I'm available to take any questions you might have.
All right. You collected a lot more here, almost enough to pay for it.
Lot more vacant parcels.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, no cards, nobody looking to speak, close public hearing, all right. And we have a motion? Yes, no, yes?
And while Reddy is here, I just wanted to thank him for the tremendous amount of work he's been doing with the Lake Sherwood community. You have no idea in terms of annexation issues with the CSC out there and working with LAFCO, but it has become quite the amount of work, but just, I know the residents really appreciate what you've done, so thank you.
Don't make it so hard on me, I'll try to find an excuse why to retire, so I want to keep this guy around. All right, so there you go. Nothing else you want to do? You had enough?
That's all for today, I'll come back next week.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
The Reddy Show, that's right. All right, so that's all I have on my agenda. We'll go back into closed session, and we, no more announcements come out of closed session? And we'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you.